I call to order the December 18th meeting of the Los Alamos Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Sol Volcanic.
Here.
Commissioner Andred, absent. Commissioner Quilty, absent. Commissioner DeBolt, absent. Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Lo.
Here.
All right, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, agenda item four, presentation. It looks like we have a presentation of fiscal sustainability. Staff report.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner members, as you may be aware, the city has been in the process for the past several months of addressing what we've termed fiscal sustainability. And really, it's a matter of looking at projections going forward with regards to revenues versus expenditures. And what we have found is we, our expenditures are ever increasing and our revenues are not keeping up with that. As a result of our findings and our projections, about a few months back, we decided to conduct a public outreach to really just educate and inform the public as to what's happening, why we're facing this situation going forward. And that resulted in a number of community meetings. So to date, we have conducted about eight community meetings, I believe. Yes, we had five scheduled community meetings where three of those were in community parks, two were in buildings at different times, in different days. We have probably seen approximately 400 or so participate in the various community events or meetings that we've conducted to date. We also felt that in addition to the community outreach, two other things that we wanted to do, we wanted to reach out and address all of the city staff and receive their input, which we've done, and then also reach out to all the board and commission members. We were hoping to have come to you earlier than this. You're the last commission to, for us to speak to, only because we had a schedule conflict or one of our key staff members had a schedule conflict. Unfortunately, he had a last-minute emergency come up and he wasn't able to make it tonight as well. And that's our fiscal sustainability manager, David Kane. He's a part-time temporary staff member that we brought on, former finance director for Fountain Valley and other locations that we brought on to provide technical assistance to our team as we go through this process. So what we want to do this evening is to be able to present to you the same PowerPoint presentation that we've done so far with the public and then provide an opportunity for questions and answers after that. So we have, as you can see behind me, we have two of our department directors here. We have our police chief, Eric Nunez, and our finance director, Eric Hendrickson. Mr. Hendrickson is going to go through the PowerPoint presentation. And again, afterwards, we'd be happy to answer any questions and receive input from you at that time. So I'll pass it over to Mr. Hendrickson at this time.
Thank you. So as Les mentioned, we have been engaged in community outreach meetings with various groups in the community, a few park meetings, different commission meetings. We met with the senior club, we met with the Kiwanis Club, we're going to meet with the Rotary Club soon. But what we're really doing is getting the message out there of what we're facing in the next 10 to 20 years. So really, what is the problem? That we have been balancing our budgets the last 10 years by making service cuts to, cuts the city's services and reductions in staffing levels. Projected structural budget deficit is starting in next year of approximately just over $1 million, and it's going to be growing in the next 20 years. And that's mainly due to pension costs. This chart right here will show you, the red line is our projected expenditures in the next 10 years. The blue line is a little bit more flat. That's our projected revenues. You'll see right there, projected deficit of fiscal year 2021 is about 1.4 million. And then on the very bottom there, you'll see the pension costs. That's just a component of that rising red line. That yellow line is the pension cost, payments we make to CalPERS to fund current and past employees' pensions. The budget deficit in about nine years from now, '27, '28, is projected to be about $3.4 million. That's the gap between that year's revenue and expenses. Like most other California cities, the state has taken away money from each city's coffers. In 1992, the state took property tax money from each city known as ERAF, Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. Pretty much, they had to balance their own budget, so they took money from each city. Since then, it has accumulated to about $12 million that's been taken. That's money that we would have gotten if it wasn't for that act. Since then, they have taken that from us, and it continues to be about a $700,000 per year hit to our budget. All of these conditions will result in a depleting general fund cash position in about five years. This next slide, we wanted to show, this is a projection of our reserves. You'll see the first few, the first four years have a green bar of about $7 to $8 million of cash reserves in the bank. And once we start drawing on those, if we can't balance our budgets going forward, the reserves go down. All cash will be exhausted around fiscal year '24, '25. But even before that, there's a cash flow, a cash flow issue where we need to have money in the bank to pay our bills. We only get paid our property taxes twice a year, December and April, when each resident pays their bill. So we need to have money in our bank to sustain ourselves for about six months at a time until the big property tax deposits hit our account. So why is this impacting our city? Prop 13 was enacted in 1978, and that really led to a loss of local control, and that cemented how much property tax each, each taxing entity gets in the county. For the city of Los Alamos, we get 11.6 cents of each property tax dollar that you pay. On the flip side, sales tax, anytime you pay a sales tax at a store, that is a fixed share of seven and three-quarters. The city gets 1% of that. This has left many capital projects unfunded, but they still, we still very much need to fund these either now or in the near future. This increase in non-controllable costs includes healthcare, pension costs, and even with the, it's called the UAL, the Unfunded Accrued Liability Payment, we have to make to CalPERS every single year to fund the shortfalls that have happened in the last 60 years that we've been a city. There's two components to CalPERS. The payroll side of things where the employee and the employer pays a actuarial determinant percentage of their payroll every two weeks to CalPERS to fund the pension. And then, once a year, we pay a lump sum to CalPERS in July to help make up the unfunded difference of the pension pool. This year, in fiscal year 1920, we paid 1.3 million, and that's projected to rise over the next 20 years to almost 2.2 million per year after that. So what have we been doing to deal with this problem? Since 2009, we've reduced our staffing levels by about 25 full-time equivalents. We've eliminated various programs and activities. We now require all city employees to contribute to their own retirement, and we've reorganized departments impacting services as well. So the real goal of this fiscal sustainability outreach is to develop a solution that provides for maintaining city services that the community enjoys. Local police protection, maintaining streets, community events, crossing guards, everything you think that the city does on a service level, these are the things we are proud to do and we want to keep doing for the residents. Some of the potential service cuts. If we can't find solutions, we can eliminate recreation and senior services programs, cut the general fund contribution to residential paving and parks, we can restructure police services as crossing guards, youth programs, contract out even more of planning and development services and public works. But most, none of these things even address the $3 million gap that's coming in the near future.
Can I just pause for a second?
Sure.
I'd like to just note, for the record, that Art DeBolt just showed up. Sorry for the interruption.
You're good, you're good.
Senior Art, you mentioned that employees are now funding their own retirement plans. What does that, does that mean? Do we still offer a pension plan here at the city?
Yes, so if, any full-time employee in the city has to be part of CalPERS pension plan. The city doesn't put into social security. In lieu of that, we put into the state pension plan. And so that, there is an employer side of payroll and an employee deduction from your paycheck. In the past, the employer used to pick up both of those.
Okay.
So now, across the board, and this has been in place, I think, for over 10 years now, that the employee pays their full fair share and the employer pays their full share as well. On the flip side, the potential revenue enhancement options, we can do a parcel tax, a sales tax, there's increases to utility users' taxes, adjusting hotel TOT taxes, and even a recreation fee increase to get a full cost recovery option. As you can see here, the utility users' tax, the hotel bed tax, those options are very minimal in the grand scheme of things. The only two real options on the table that would make sense financially would be a parcel tax or a sales tax. Those are the two numbers that are required to reach that $3 million gap. If a solution isn't found, we will still strive for a balanced budget every year, but that will result in a further elimination of programs, neighborhood safety programs, elimination of community events, potentially a decrease in police protection, elimination of school crossing guards, senior programs, all the services that the residents currently Potential solution is a local funding measure. As I mentioned, the property tax option or a sales tax option would give the city local control and really fund the local needs that we have. Any local funding cannot be touched by the state. It's in the state constitution that if a property tax or a sales tax initiative was to occur, the state can't take it away at that point. And that's money that would stay in Los Alamos. Many other cities have utilized local sales tax measures to maintain fiscal stability. These measures aren't applied to food purchases like groceries and medications or services. Visitors to Los Alamos would pay their fair share. It's any, it applies to any purchase in the city limits. And the one-cent sales tax measure would generate approximately $3.1 million. So like our interim city manager said, we've gone around and presented this brief slideshow to different residents, and we really want to get feedback from them and see where they're at, see what's palatable, see if they have ideas, see where, pretty much where the city should be going in the next 20 years. The city council hasn't decided on any of these items yet. Nothing's being forced to them, but we will be presenting to them next month on January 14th. We're going to have a special fiscal sustainability workshop to present all of these options, get their feedback, because they're the official decision-makers. And then we're also going to present to them the results of a statistical survey that went out this past month to get voter, let's say this, voter, it was a statistical survey on registered voters in the city to get their feedback on these issues as well. Up here is my contact information. I'm the finance director, and Les mentioned David Kane, he's our fiscal sustainability manager. Please email us, reach out to us if you have any questions. We're always looking for suggestions, feedbacks, and any questions you may have. And that concludes the presentation tonight, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner members, if I could add to, as David, excuse me, as Eric mentioned, there's, there's no solu, or we haven't identified a solution, haven't made a recommendation. We've really brought this about to stir or stimulate community interest and feedback, and we've received a lot of that. We're receiving more through the survey that was just completed. Those results will be coming out shortly. And even though there's talk about enhancement and cuts, it, really, our interest here is not to persuade or dissuade anything, but rather to leave it open for good constructive feedback to be provided, that information to be gathered and given to our, the city council so they can make an informed decision going forward, decisions going forward. So I just want to emphasize that, that our objective, our interest right now is just to receive feedback, to answer questions, and again, either through your dialogue today or further outreach with either David Kane or Eric Hendrickson or directly to council, we just want to make sure that all of the information's on the table and again, informed decisions can be made going forward. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions or receive any comments you may have.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah, you mentioned a survey that went out, when?
It was during the, during the month of November, and it was a statistical survey. 300 registered voters were contacted in the community. So it wasn't an out, a survey for everybody. They were identified based on participating in, I think, the last two elections. It was a combination of phone surveys as well as electronic distribution as well for surveys to be done online. So there were 300 people randomly selected throughout the community based on registered voters that have participated in the last two elections.
I have a question. Did I understand you correctly in that we're making what amount to catch-up payments on pension liabilities over the past 60 years? It sounded like they weren't appropriately funded or...
Yeah, so when, the city's been in existence for about 60 years now, and since then, they've been a part of CalPERS promising pensions to the employees and eventually when they retire, these lifetime payments. With the actuarial, the actuarial, the actuaries determine how pensions are funded through future investment gains. And so when the stock market crashes, when the stock market booms, when life expectancy fluctuates, when employee count jumps, when employee count drops, all of these things affect the pension pool and its funding status. So at the end of the day, the actuaries at CalPERS determine how much the city is either overfunded or underfunded to pay out these promised benefits to its retirees.
And, and it sounds like we're currently underfunded and we're trying to...
Yes, and that's about to the tune of $18.5 million, underfunded.
Okay.
And if I could add to that, that's not a Los Alamos-specific matter, that's a statewide matter. So that's...
Well, it's a huge, unfunded pension liabilities are huge, like everywhere. I mean, it's a big problem, so I'm aware of that.
And that had to do with PERS projections, right?
Correct.
That were basically unrealistic.
Yeah, I mean, and they, they just dropped their expected investment return recently from seven and a half to seven. So some years, you know, they make 10%, some years they make 6%. So every year, just determined, just based on the market, what they invest in is, I knew those things, I'd be in good shape, but I don't, so...
So what type, what type of accountability do, does anybody have with, with CalPERS, you know, for those type of miscalculations? I mean, I understand that it's, it's difficult to, you know, predict certain things, but I mean, that's their job.
Yeah. I mean, now...
And I also know that there are other organizations that, you know, that properly fund their pensions and manage that stuff a lot better than, than local and state municipalities seem to do.
Yeah, correct. I mean, there's, CalPERS has a board of governors. I think it's like an 18-person board that determines the policies they make, what they invest in. Sometimes they get handcuffed on, you know, being a socially responsible investor versus going for the best return, where they put their money, what the projections are, where they think the future stock market's going. Do they invest more in stocks and bond, stocks versus bonds, government treasuries, foreign markets? I mean, all, all these things factor into the decisions they make. But at the end of the day, they're telling us, we, they want to average about 7% on their investment pool. So when it doesn't come in at that 7%, an unfunded liability presents itself, because these benefits have to be paid out to the retirees, but the, but the funding just isn't there for it if the stock market doesn't return. Or even if like the...
Not necessarily the stock market, it's probably more so fixed incomes.
Oh yeah, I mean, if, if all the retirees live 10 years longer than the mortality tables that they're projecting off of, more unfunded liability exists then. So there's, there's a lot of different factors that go into this.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just comments. I mean, it's like beating a dead horse, but I mean, I, I remember sitting up here in this seat in 199, from 1998 to 2002, with no experience, and I'm self-employed, always been self-employed, no experience with pension funds, okay? But I can remember distinctly the financial, our Gerard Goodhart, who ran the, the money side, but the finance, head of finance here, coming in, and this is when the, we were changing the retirement, the years going from, I don't know, going up to 55 and getting...
They, they increased...
Two or two and a half, 3% or something like, you know?
Yeah.
And I'm not quite, I'm under, and of course, then they show the projections from PERS at the time, which were like 9, 10, 10% projections. When, and I'm going, you know, and the market, we were, it was steaming along at that time. And I said, doesn't that seem to be kind of high? I mean, wouldn't you be projecting at that time in the 5 and maybe 6% rates? I mean, looking, looking at what you can get in the bank and T-bills and stuff like that, which were, and you're projecting higher than that, which you should really probably be in more of the, you know, that, that type of a range. Oh, no, no, it's just going to go on and on. And the council bought it, listened to him, including me. I mean, I will, I mean, but I'm relying at that point upon seasoned council members who had been here and staff members who had been here. No offense to the staff that's here, by the way. But, but I mean, you know, unfortunately, common sense didn't prevail, and it still doesn't prevail. I mean, they're losing money. If they lowered their projections right now, I mean, what do you get in the bank? A point? If you're lucky, maybe two? And, you know, you're still using projections at 7%. So what's the solution? You've got to vote them out. I mean, you know, we're, I don't know. I mean, so that's, that's it. I guess my comment or question, did you look at contract, contracting out services? I know we have changes coming up and this type of a thing, but going, going out, contract services, we can't, for example, we contract out for our building official, or building inspectors are contracted out. You know, we have staff that, the attorney is not an employee, he's a contract employee, okay? We have less, not to pick on you too much, but, you know, should, should these positions that we be looking at, should they be contracted out? The prior community development director, I don't know if you still do double duty with respect to public works director and community development director, and I, I made this comment last couple of years. If you have one person doing two jobs, basically what you're saying is that there's not enough business or work in the city to justify either one of those positions full-time. Why not contract out those services when you need it and, and eliminate the pension liability, eliminate the benefits by contracting out some of the, some of the upper staff? You know, that's my thought. I mean, and, and have you looked at that as an alternative for the council? Or is it just strictly looking at the income side, not the expense side? I mean, the expenses are minimal, but you need to get into the, and including, I mean, chief is here too. I think everybody should be on the table. I think that, that discussion of going, you know, like looking at the sheriffs or something like that, I know that reared it head, reared its head when I was on the council. Of course, then, no. I mean, it was, we like our, you know, and we all do, we like the police, but it's kind of like we're getting down to the, down to the bottom of the barrel here. I mean, we're going to be out of money in eight or nine years. I mean, we get a tax, we get a, a sales tax or whatever. How long does that fund it? Because that's, if you keep the same projections on PERS and you keep the same, you know, are you going to come back to the well in another four or five years? If we have a structural problem, I think we have to take a look at it structurally. And that would mean, look at contracting services and stuff like that, maybe including looking at the largest, the largest cost that we have, which is police. And we have, you know, and this is not to take away from any, what we have, but, but to look at it and get the numbers and get them out on the table so that the council can make, you know, that into the mix. I mean, I've seen data put out by the sheriff's department on some of their form, you know, showing where we are, how the city's ranked, contract cities versus cities that have their own police forces. And on a per capita basis, we're like number two in the county, number two or three in the county for what we pay per capita for police services. We're, we're right behind, I think Laguna Beach and Newport Beach or something like that for the average cost per capita. And maybe that's not the right, I'm just saying that it's high and we're high. And, and it would seem to me that we have to, it'd be hard to do it, but we have to look at, at providing the council that data if you're trying to have them make an informed decision. So I don't know if you've done that or there's any plans to do that, but I would think that would be valuable data, I mean, to, you know, to look at.
We have the Budget Standing Committee, the Council Budget Standing Committee, a few months back, directed staff to look at a multitude of options. And we provided information to them. There were, I believe, 21 options, most of those options being staff reduction, service reduction related. Some of those were revenue enhancement, but most of them were service reduction related. And that included, you know, public works, development services. The police aspect of it was an estimate, because in order for us to get a cost estimate from the sheriff's office, they charge for that, and it's in the tens of thousands of dollars to give us a cost estimate. So we have not gone forward with that with, because that has not been directed yet by council to go to that direction. I will say, though, that based on the preliminary work that staff did, if you do a per capita or per officer, an officer hour comparison to what we have today, our conclusion was it was not a, a, much of a savings at all to the city. Meaning that if the sheriff's office provided the same patrol, patrol hours, if you will, or patrol officers per capita that we currently offer, it would not be much of a savings at all. So again, that's not having an official, formal proposal from them, but it is based on valuable information that we've received from other agencies and departments and looking at that information and putting it, you know, something together for the Council Budget Standing Committee to consider. So we have looked at a lot of those options. There, first to say, there, there is budget or cost savings associated with a lot of those, but there's also, you know, potential reduction in service and, not potential, the high probability of reduction in service. And that's the big question as to, is there a willingness and desire to see those service reductions in order to see a revenue deduct, you know, to see a savings, I should say, a budget savings? Or what option? I think it's probably, at the end of the day, a hybrid of some reductions and some revenue enhancement that's going to have to occur to make it work. And I just, really quick to your comment with regards to, will we have to come back and will there be a need to maybe look at additional revenue enhancement later on? I certainly hope not, but we all know that it's unforeseen as to what will transpire going forward. We have to do our best in our estimations, and we've taken a very conservative position in the, in the numbers that we've presented to you. For example, with sales tax, we, we took a very conservative estimate going forward. We could see sales tax increase quite a bit going forward, or we could see it drop down. So we figured better to take a lower estimate on that and have tried to also be realistic in, in our projections for, you know, our cost estimates for just budget, you know, and, and our expenditures here as well. So it is, it is a tough decision going forward. It's, it's tough to estimate, but again, I think we took a conservative position. We did provide a lot of information to the Council Budget Standing Committee that was then subsequently provided to all of the council members for their consideration. And we anticipate that that will be further reviewed and considered during the budget, or excuse me, during the fiscal sustainability workshop on January 14th. during the fiscal sustainability workshop on January fourteenth.
So I was curious, curious one is top three revenues and top three expenses in the city, what those would be. And I also wanted to get Eric's thoughts on this, is that a pensioned city employee versus a contracted employee? I would think theoretically the cost would be the same, meaning that the contracted employee is gonna require a higher salary than the pensioned city employee. Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. I was wondering if, what's your, what's your thoughts on that?
For example, the, for an employee who makes, you know, or for the pension on an employee, for a classic employee, let's say a classic police officer who's been here for ten years, there, the city pays approximately an additional twenty percent, that's the employer's side of the pension formula. So if the officer makes seventy thousand a year, for example, the, the city will pay an additional fourteen thousand towards the pension, and the officer will pay approximately nine percent of that seventy thousand dollars towards the, his side of the pension as well.
Okay.
If we contracted out every single employee, there's still that unfunded annual payment required by CalPERS. So even if tomorrow, all the employees left, and we didn't hire anybody else, CalPERS would still be, still has the right to come get their one and a half million from us, and that increases every year. This year was about one point two, I should say. Next year, I think it's about one point four, and every year that increases as an annual payment to PERS regardless of the number of employees we have. Does that answer your question?
Kinda, yeah.
Well, at what point does that, does that change? Right? I mean, because I, I saw that, you know, we've reduced our staff over the last X number of years, right, by a pretty significant headcount, twenty-five people. I think that's pretty dramatic for a small city like this. And so those are pensions that we're not having to fund. So at some point, just atrophy, people pass away.
There is a drop-off, yes. In about eighteen to twenty years, CalPERS, CalPERS is requiring these annual payments, and again, with their projection, in about eighteen to twenty years, that will start to drop down. But again, with the projection that long and far out, who's to say if that's really gonna come to fruition or not? But there, again, with their projections, it's about eighteen to twenty years, and that annual payment starts to go away.
And that's just to fund our employees?
All, all of the current and past people, anybody that's been in the pool over the last sixty years.
Wow.
Well, let me just give you, and, and again, these are without, just looking at the numbers that I've seen out there, and I'll just, I'm gonna pick on police, I'm gonna pick on the sheriffs and that type of a thing, and keeping in mind, I'm not gonna say it's unsupported data, but it's, it's an unknown until, unless the city were to do a diligent look at it. But in comparing the per capita cost, the savings would be about three million dollars a year to the city. If you use the sheriff's data with the average, the average contract city cost versus what we're paying right now, if we just, that's not looking at quality of the services, it's not looking at all of that stuff, if you're just taking the data, the difference would be a little over three million dollars. So if you couple the three million, if you could, if you could generate a three million dollar savings that way, and that's on the backs of the police, I'm not saying to do that, but that, because I firmly believe that if you go contracting some areas, you can, you can save significant money. And if you did have a sales tax, you've got a six million dollar swing. I mean, right there, that, if you have an eighteen million dollar liability, and almost in theory, you could, you could, you could solve it in three or four years or five years. I know that's not gonna happen, but I mean, that's just using raw numbers. I've done a little digging, the smallest, we're the second smallest city in the county, the smallest city in the county, I think it's Villa Park, and they are one hun, they are one hundred percent, well, they're, they're a con, basically a contract city for all services. I think they have three employees, three employees that are full-time, I think, paying into PERS and that type of, I think, I'm, I looked at this a month or two ago, so my, but they had, and then how they're set up, I mean, it's almost like, that's the type of data that needs to be looked at seriously, because obviously the city can't keep going the way it's going, and it's like you're kicking the can down the road if nothing changes and you add a one cent sales tax. Okay, that kicks the can down the road for seven or eight, nine more years maybe, whatever, and who knows? I know in doing a little digging around, there were, I think, recently, there, there was a three, a three hundred thousand dollar study done, three hundred, fun, and it was done this year, three hundred thousand dollar study done by fifteen cities, I think there were contract cities with the Sheriff's Department, to determine going into the future, is this viable or should, you know, is, is it working or whatever? And that report came out in March of this year. Did you see that? Have you looked, have you guys looked at that? I don't, I mean, and, and there's data there. I'm just saying, trying to get the data to every, you get, get all the data you can so you can make the informed decision. I'm not saying to do it, I'm just saying, you've gotta have the information, or everybody's just speculating about what it might be. If it costs ten thousand dollars for a, for a study that could save you two million, it, that's, that's cheap. And it might say no, it might, when it's all said and done, it says, no, you're not, you're not gonna get the savings you thought you were gonna get. Well, that's great, that takes that off the table, and you gotta find a different way to do it. I mean, but it's, otherwise, you just, I'm just, you guys are the consultants, you're providing this information to the council. To me, it would, it would seem to me you'd give them enough information and places to go to try to, to do a real deep dive into, into the, onto the expense side, because the easy part is to do a sales tax. The easy part is to try to raise a revenue, but if it doesn't come in, then what? I mean, I don't, I'm just, look at what people make, and, you know, when I was on the city council, I know we got, we, we had a budget problem, and we started, I was astonished, the lowest paid employee secretary in here, this was in ninety-eight, started at about thirty-five thousand a year, thirty-five or forty thousand a year. I don't know what it is now, the lowest paid position, it just blew me away, and, because I know what we were paying, secretaries in, at that time, low, you know, entry level, you know, ten, eight or nine dollars an hour, stuff like that. So I don't, I don't know, I mean, it's just, if you can contract out, it, you might pay the same salary, but you forego the pension and you forego the benefits, medical and stuff like that.
The long-term liabilities.
Yeah, it's a long, yeah, so that's just my comment. I mean, not to.
Mr. Chair, Chairman, if I may comment, I, I know that the one study you were talking about per capita that the Commissioner DeBolt was talking about, and that came out in the paper in Orange County Register, and, and it's a way of looking at it, the cost, right? If you look at it per officer, per deputy, the top-end deputy in Orange County Sheriff's Department makes more than a sergeant does at Los Alamitos. And that's the fully boat, the fully benefited deputy versus a fully benefited sergeant at top-end. Part of the reason why is because OSERS is no cheaper than PERS's in terms of retirement system. You've all read about that, you've seen that, you know, with OSERS through the Sheriff's Department and even Orange County Fire Authority. Those costs are significant for retirement systems. So when you look at it that way, and if you look at it, if you look at it not just per capita, but if you were to get like service, there is, it's impossible for that service to be cheaper than what you have it now. It, what you're paying your officers and your police department here. One of the, I think it was Chairman Low was, or, Commissioner Low was asking, you know, what's the biggest expense? Well, the police department's probably about forty-four percent of our, you know, revenue of our operating budget, and, and seventy-eight to eighty-two percent of that is just personnel, because it's just a service. We don't make widgets, we provide police protection twenty-four seven. So when you look at those, those things, if you're not comparing apples to apples, yeah, it's a difference. So if you, if, and we have tried to compare apples to apples with the Sheriff's Department. We've looked at Stanton's contract, we've looked at Villa Park, we've looked at Dana Point, and, and have tried to get some numbers, but it's, it's, it's not easy, because as the city manager indicated, they don't want to be the hammer for negotiations for labor contracts, the sheriff does not want to be. If you seriously want them to look at something, you're gonna have to pay them to do the study that they need to do, because one of the things they need to do is find out what kind of service level they're gonna provide you in the first place. If you want the same service level as Rossmore, you're not gonna get dedicated deputies coming into there. You're gonna get people that are, that are gonna respond from, you know, San Ana, where their deputies do. They come and they do make routine patrols in that area, but there, that's where they're housed at. There is no substation for them necessarily to operate directly from, into that community. So there are a number of times when they have significant response time issues, so they'll call us. And we have a mutual aid compact with the Sheriff's Department, and they'll allow us, or not allow us, they'll ask us to respond to a priority one call, and they're en route, because they have a delayed response. And so we'll get there and we'll hold down the fort until they get there. So we're here, we have a response time of about two minutes and forty-six seconds to priority one calls. So we, there is a different level in service. So if you're gonna compare those things, I think Commissioner DeBolt is correct. You need to look at apples to apples, you know, if that's what you wanna do, and, and we'd be willing to do that, obviously. We want, we presented numbers to the Budget Standing Committee so they can have an idea to work from and look at that. We're not saying that, you know, if you wanted to reduce service levels of your, of your police department or police services, that you couldn't have that happen. What we do know is that there's a, there's a buy-in, say, to have a police department, a minimum amount of deployment, and we're at those numbers pretty close to right now. I mean, so if you're going to start reducing that, the strength of the police department to a lower number, then of course you're gonna have to look at outsourcing it to somebody else, and that's just a fact, because, and, and get less service, you know, as a result of that. And that's, but that may be something that's palatable or necessary, you know, we're not trying to make the, you know, decision, we're just providing some of those facts to the Budget Standing Committee, who are eventually gonna get this package to the full council, and what is it, the fourteenth or the, fourteenth of January, so that they can have that discussion openly and discuss the things that have been talked about, the budget cuts that we've been looking at. One of the things that the chairman had brought up was, you know, some of the divestiture policies of PERS, and we know that that's an issue. I serve as a vice, first Vice President of CalChiefs, a state organization that's been really looking at the way PERS is investing or divestiture policies, and it's not been a pleasant thing, and looking at the representation there, so much so that we've actually been talking to state legislators so that they quit creating legislation that prevents them from investing in, you know, energy, other energy besides wind and solar, and also to get the SEC involved in doing an examination of what's going on up there. And that's what we're seeing now, is that the SEC is actually thinking that they need to take a look at what PERS is doing, because they are such a large, you know, retirement system, and, and they are beholden to the state of California, and they, and the taxpayers, and they need to make sure that their investments are being done properly and appropriately. And so that is happening, and I don't know what that'll turn out to be, but I, I just wanted to comment on that, because I know you said who's holding them accountable, but I think some of that stuff is coming to a head. But I, I know that, that there are a number of issues that we brought up, and when we take away certain things about the Yorba Linda Police Department, there's things that, if they wanna live, if they wanna actually house the deputies in our building where we're at, there are a lot of upgrades that are gonna have to happen, because they're not gonna come in into an inferior building, they just won't do that. They had to do the same thing at Yorba Linda when they took over, and it costs a lot of money, all the cars cost money. So there's some upfront costs that has to, for transition of those things that are part of the apples-to-apples comparison. It's a study that is pretty robust, and we know what Yorba Linda went through to have that done, and the amount of time it took, and the amount of money it took. So, yeah, long-term, maybe it is worth that money if you were to go that route, but it is something that has to, you know, that really, you know, we've taken a, a pretty good look at, have provided whatever numbers that we were able to provide to the Budget Standing Committee that are pretty sound, but if you really do compare those two things, deputy to officer, like I said, a deputy, a top step deputy in the Sheriff's Department is making more than a top step sergeant is at our police department, and every rank above that, it keeps, it continues to grow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, well, definitely a big discussion. Unfortunately, I don't think it's one that's isolated to just our city, it's happening all over the place. And I think pension liabilities and not, I don't wanna sound like I'm not in favor of pensions, I'm, I'm not in favor of pensions that aren't appropriately funded, and there's, I think there's a, a big issue with elected officials that make, you know, these decisions on pensions and what they're gonna pay out, and, and they don't have the follow-through. They kinda kick the can and pass it on to future generations, and they don't make sure that those obligations are appropriately planned for and funded, and, you know, it's, it's catching up to a lot of us right now, you know, everywhere, so, big discussion. All right, anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to oral communications. Seeing that no one is present to speak, I will move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Are you gonna aye or you? All right, motion carries. Consent calendar, we have none, public hearing, we have none, staff report, we have none, on to discussion item ten A, Plan Sign Program PSP nineteen oh two, signage for Town Square at forty-two sixteen through forty-three ninety, Cattella Avenue. Staff report?
Chair Riley and members of the Planning Commission, Plan Sign Program nineteen oh two is the consideration of the Town Square signs, which are, Town Square is the one that has Seven-Eleven, Coconut Rabbit, things like that in it. And it's, the shopping center's at four-two-one-six to four-three-nine-oh, even numbers on Cattella. And then there are two buildings which are part of the center, but they follow just the regular code. So, but the rest of the center goes on to four-two-three-two and four-two-four-oh, Cattella Avenue. They're located in the commercial office zone, commercial professional office zoning district. And Freddie Martinez of PMX Consulting was the applicant for the, the project, and he was not able to make it tonight. However, it's not a, a public hearing where he would wanna speak or anything like that, he said. So the applicant requests the commission approval of a plan sign program that has two monument signs, one wall sign and per tenant base section, and one wall sign per in-cap tenant, so on the sides of the buildings. And, let's see, okay, the shopping center will require more than, will require more than five signs, so therefore that's why they're doing the plan sign program. The plan sign program was originally approved, there was one approved in nineteen eighty-four, it's aged, so they wanna do a new type of signage, which you can see on the, the front of the building there, it's black and white, it's approximately forty-eight tenant bays there, so there would be about, with the side tenants, about fifty-two. about 52 signs that they could possibly have. Two of the signs at the entrance, let's bring up the signage here. Those are the buildings there that are part of this, A, B, and C, which is the main section. And then D is the section on the other side of Orange County Mattress that has Subway and places like that. So the Subway building has a short monument sign, and that is well within code. The larger ones, though, they have extra address signage on the bottom, which when you pull up to that, the corner there for a brief moment, until you pull out a little bit farther, it's more difficult to see traffic and pedestrians as they're walking up the street. So staff has made a suggestion in condition 12 that they place that elsewhere on the signage with director's opinion on how, where to place it later on. And the applicant is fine with that. I've talked with them about that. And the other signs are basically like what's on every other building in this town, so that it's not, not much of a leap on this plan sign program, other than the fact that it is black and white. And it's kind of hard to see in that picture. Let me bring that back up again. Not as clear to see as the signs with a white background are right now. But they've talked to the lessees of the building, and they are fine with it. So I'm not sure, you know, how that discussion went, but so far I've been told that they're fine with it. Staff recommends approval of Plan Sign Program 1902 to replace Plan Sign Program 184. Back to you.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
No. Be nice for that. Be a nice change for down there.
Yeah. Yes.
All right. So with that, I'll open the public hearing, see if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item. All right. And we have no one present to come forward and speak on this item, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. They have a...
I'll make a motion.
Or a motion or...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. That takes us to item 10B, Resolution of Intention. Staff report, please.
Yes. Chair Riley and members of the Planning Commission. This is a resolution of intention the staff brings to you tonight. Based on direction, the state has directed cities to allow for accessory dwelling units and family daycare homes in an easier fashion than they have been in the past. And so therefore, we need to come up with new codes in order to meet what the state has directed, but still have what little control we do over that. So there, if we don't make a decision in the next few months, we follow what the state has directed for accessory dwelling units and family daycare homes. So we're asking you tonight to allow discussion in the next few meetings, not necessarily the very next meeting, but when we get that written. And it starts with a resolution of intention. So back to you, Chair Riley.
All right. Thank you. Questions, comments for staff?
So the family daycare is just, it's not the, it's just, it's for children?
Children, yes.
For daycare?
Yeah. Yeah.
Age?
Up to...
Ten, I believe.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Do they still fall under state regulations as to how many they can have at one time present and how many bedrooms and everything?
Yeah, there's, there's some of that. Probably should defer the city attorney about that.
I'm sorry, was the question that these uses would still be subject to state regulations concerning the physical premises and so forth?
How many they can have there at a time, how many bedrooms, how many, everything they have to have for this.
They would still be required to obtain all licensing through the state. It's really just a limitation on the city's ability to regulate from the land use side or to treat these now large family daycare units as anything other than a residential use that someone should be able to implement without any sort of city approval.
Anything else? Is this a public hearing?
No.
No, this is just an intention. So if this is granted, if the resolution's approved, then we draft the language, it comes back to you, and a public hearing would be conducted at that time, then you'd make a recommendation to city council, and they would subsequently conduct a public hearing as well.
Okay.
And will we hold any liability to anything on this at all, or there's nothing by them changing and increasing this?
It...
Liability of anybody being, of any of these children injured because of the changes in the code, or we have protection for us?
We would not incur any additional liability by virtue of these uses now being permitted without our oversight.
It's just more kids in the neighborhood.
So any other discussion?
No.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion to what?
Approve.
Further discussion, right?
It's to approve the resolution of intention.
All right. Okay. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. And I guess we'll look for this one coming back to us with more detail at a future date.
Yes.
All right. We have no items from the, oh, do we have any items from the Development Services Director?
Just very briefly, to Chair, Commission members, I wanted to report that at the city council meeting this past Monday evening, there was a public hearing held on the 4281 Cotella property that was just recently before you. That was a proposed general plan amendment and change of zone for that two-story office building. And that item was considered and unanimously approved, so the one portion that requires warrants will go to second reading during the January meeting, but there was no additional public testimony. The same, essentially the same correspondence came from the neighboring Arrowhead property, and nobody else spoke regarding that item. So that appears to be going forward with approval as per your recommendation. Again, just want to, as a reminder, if you're interested, once again, the Fiscal Sustainability Workshop of City Council will be held on January 14th, which is actually a Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And then finally, on behalf of staff and myself, we want to wish each and every one of you and your families a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
All right. Great. Commissioner reports. Anything?
Well, just have a nice holiday.
Yeah, I think I would like to say the same thing to all of my fellow commissioners up here and to staff. Thanks for all the hard work from everybody. I said it at the Christmas party, but I mean, staff really does the heavy lifting and makes our job easier up here. So thank you for that, and thank you for the participation from all my fellow commissioners up here. And Happy Holidays.
Just one comment. Same thing. Happy holidays and have a good, have a good Christmas. And then since our, at the last meeting, I raised a question regarding the requirement we had in the approval on the apartment, the new apartments up here about recording the notification or the, you know, about the remedial work for the hazardous waste on the site. Did that language ever get worked out?
We've revisited that with the applicant. They're working on getting it recorded, so it is in process. Also, with regards to just reporting on the site, the remediation work is now complete, and they're just waiting on the appropriate agency to give the final authority. But everything has indicated to us it's been successfully remediated, and they should be starting to import soil and working on, we're ready to issue a building permit once that clearance is granted. So it was quite an arduous process. It went very quickly, but as some of you may have experienced firsthand, it was, it was fairly strong and odor at times, but they were successful in being able to clear it out rather quickly. We're thankful for that because I know the adjacent property to the west took much longer than this remediation exercise, but again, they, they should be importing the clean dirt here soon. And again, the water quality board has indicated to us that everything is successful. We're just waiting for the final documentation to represent that.
And are we going to have, are we going to hold up the permit?
Until that...
Until they get the, that condition?
We've notified them of that.
Okay, good. All right.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.